I'd like to call the November 2018 meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will begin by having an invocation from Ms. Etheridge.
Good evening. Heavenly Creator, in this season of gratitude and abundance, we give you thanks for our many blessings. As we pray for all who struggle with hunger and want, be with them in the dark of night when all hope seems lost, keep their faith strong as they await relief, and let your goodness flow through our hearts and hands as we reach out to one another in the full, true joy of Thanksgiving in Christ. Thank you.
And now Moyac Elementary School Principal Brandy Kelly will introduce the student who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I would like to introduce August Wong and Jackson Briggs, two of our student leaders from Moyac Elementary School. They will lead us in the pledge.
Would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This month's school spotlight is also on Moyac Elementary, so I'll just turn it back over to Principal Brandy Kelly.
Thank you very much. So Moyac Elementary School is known and has been known for leadership, so I felt like that was something that we should spotlight because it is definitely something that we're very proud of at Moyac Elementary. So I want to talk first, I want to talk first about our mission statement. Our mission statement is, and you may have seen, we've got a big social media kind of presence, and one of our hashtags is Learn Play Dream Grow, inspiring one Panther leader at a time. And we have that because it is definitely the essence of Moyac Elementary. We're preparing Panther leaders for another, for their future. So that's kind of what we're going to focus on tonight. So I wanted to start, first of all, with our Panther Leadership PBIS program because that is a big component of our program. So I want to introduce Ms. Teresa Sawyer, who's going to talk a little bit about that.
Good evening. What is PBIS, you may ask? It's a framework or approach comprised of intervention practices and organizational systems for establishing the social, culture, learning, and teaching environment and individual behavior supports needed to achieve academic and social success for all students. Well, MES began PBIS with our school improvement team developing a school-wide behavior plan. This was several years ago. It was Behavior Matrix. It focused on four, five areas of the school. It was then promoted with behavior expectation signs posted at specific locations throughout the school. Panther tickets were given for positive individual behavior rewards. Popsicle sticks were awarded for good Panther behavior hallway, or hallway behavior, for class behavior. Commercials were produced with Petey the Panther, spotlighting first through fifth-grade students' leaders to model the seven habits of good Panther behavior. PBIS continues to promote a culture of positive behavior at Moyac Elementary. PBIS has evolved with the three Ps: Be positive, be proactive, be purposeful, be a Panther leader. Our committee worked diligently at every meeting last year using teacher feedback to provide ideas for the Code of Conduct implemented in August of this year. The opportunity is provided for students to earn Panther Bucks for their entire class. These are awarded by the Panther prize betal. When they earn five, 10, 15, 20 tickets, they get to choose from some different things: pajama hat day, extra recess, class movie, ice cream party, or there's a grand prize raffle for 20 Panther Bucks. So with that, on the bus, they earn Panther Bucks for individual positive, proactive, and purposeful behavior. Students are nominated for positive behavior referrals and recognized as Panther Leaders of the Week on PNN. MES Panther leaders continue to grow and gain mindset as future leaders. This is what our matrix looks like now. We now have added seven areas of the school, which is basically all areas of the school that have the rules set up. Clearly spelled out? This is what the Code of Conduct looks like. That's one of our Panther Bucks. And whenever you travel the hallways, you're going to see these outside of each classroom. There's going to be paw prints for all the Panther Bucks they've earned, and the kids get so excited when they get one for their whole class. You see, this is two of our Panther leaders that have been highlighted on PNN, the Panther News Network, run by our fabulous Ms. Lisa Rose. She has headed that up since its inception. As PBIS school coach, I have developed a passion for the safety and positive outlook of our students. It's been a privilege to watch our school gain growth, mindset, setting goals for the three Ps. Now, I want to let you know, there's a big tree going up in the hallway of Moyac Elementary, and it's sharing ways to be thankful this fall. So check it out next time you're at Moyac Elementary. And just saying, we are Panther leaders.
So I want to brag on Ms. Sawyer for a moment, too, because she has been in charge of our PBIS program at Moyac Elementary School for how many years now? A long time. So it really has evolved over time. It started with, you know, we've got our matrix, and we have all the things in the hallways, and now we're trying to get the classes to come together, and those Panther Bucks are really influential. They're already cashing them in, and so I'm feeling that as well. PNN is what I wanted to spotlight next. So Lisa Rose has done an incredible job with PNN the last several, several years. We have our own news program, so if you've never seen it, come check it out. We start every morning at 7:50, and then we end usually by 8 o'clock with a book that's being read to the entire school. This is an example of our PNN kind of showroom. It's back kind of behind the library. We have a camera operator. We have a weather person who's run, that's by a second grader, and they rotate, so every second grader in the school has a chance to do it. Fifth graders all have a chance to be anchors. So you see, they take turns doing that. So at some point of the year, from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade, they get a chance to have their leadership opportunities. So we took that idea and kind of ran with it. Last year, we started to do a little bit more defined leadership opportunities. So starting last year, we started what's called Panther Ambassador Program. We're very excited about this program. It's kind of evolved. Last year, we started about in the spring. So I wanted to introduce to you two of our members from last year's Panther Ambassador Program. They are now Moyac Middle School students. So come on up. We have Emma Friedrich and Rosalyn Marcotte. You guys will stand right here. They're going to tell us in just a moment about their experience. And then this row is full of some of our ambassadors for this year. Now, this just started, so they are brand new. So far, we've got them working hard. They're doing car duty, they're doing bus duty, they're helping with cafeteria, they're helping in the kindergarten building. That seems to be a popular area. I think it's working them a lot. So I would like to introduce, guys, come on up. This is August Wong, Sarah Morgan, Caleb Fatic, Brian Howson, Addison Foote's not here tonight, Dominic Espinoza's not here, Jackson Briggs, Lynn Gonzalez, and Atlee Worrell. So I wanted to publicly announce our first year's, or this year's Panther ambassadors. Good job, guys. So over here, I'm going to have Ms. Emma, if you'll come on up and tell me your experience, and then we're going to have Rosalyn do the same thing.
Panther Ambassador Program is a great way for kids to help kids. My experience with PAP is that I could help kids in the second grade and lower who needed help with their work when they needed it. There were two other groups that I could have been a part of. Those groups were the spokespeople groups, and the other one was Genius Hour. In Genius Hour, you would invent and create things for the future. The spokespeople group made a video at the end of the year for third, fourth, and fifth for confidence on the EOGs. We met every Monday afternoon to do our jobs around the school. Sometimes we would do our job on Wednesdays.
Thank you. Come on, Rosalyn, your turn.
Last year, there was three different ways to lead as a Panther Leader Ambassador. I decided to join the public relation group since I like to speak in public. We made an EOG prep commercial that helped other students not stress over the test. Many groups, and I, my group and I did a lip singing video filmed in different areas of the school, and we had a lot of fun filming it. Some of us tutored younger students while others of us got to lead in various award programs. I even got to lead a club for Club Day. These were opportunities we'll never forget.
Thank you. So we did. We divided up into three different groups. We had a public kind of spokesperson group. Rosalyn loved being, being that leader, so she ran some of the awards days. We had a tutoring and mentoring group, so those folks got to go to some second-grade classrooms, mainly Emma in the right second grade, and got to tutor those students. They really enjoyed that. And then we had a group do Genius Hour, which is, Google started that kind of concept, when you take what you love, and you take the idea, and you expound upon it. So upon that, we had some really interesting things. Emma actually had a tie dye. She was, we started doing a tie dye. We didn't have enough time to finish everything, but we were even going to have our own little business because she wanted to sell tie dye t-shirts. She did a great job with that. Rosalyn had the idea to start a dance club, and so we had one day when we highlighted some clubs, and Rosalyn led the club. She did a great job with that. So I went to spotlight them. Do any of our current year, no, our first, this year's ambassadors, we just started, so we have all year to do some things, and they're a little nervous. There's anyone that wants to say anything? Sarah? She wants to. Come on, Sarah.
I enjoy being a Panther Ambassador because I get the privilege every morning to go downstairs in the computer lab and help Ms. Williams turn on computers.
Very good. Very good. So they're in the process soon, I don't know if they realize it, they're going to be training our leaders of the leaders. So they're very excited because they've been doing the jobs, so our next phase is then to train the leaders. I'm very proud of them. So that's our leadership program, Moyac Elementary School. Thanks, guys.
Pretty good. Okay, Ms. Kelly, bring all the students back up to the microphone there. Okay, if you would, I would like each student to say their name loud and clear in what grade you're in.
Jackson Briggs, fifth grade.
August Wong, fifth grade.
Sarah Morgan, fifth grade.
Lynn Gonzalez, fifth grade.
Brian Howson, fifth grade.
Atlee Worrell, fifth grade.
And then our middle schoolers now.
Emma Friedrich, sixth grade.
Rosalyn Marcotte, sixth grade.
Thank you all very much. You did a great job.
Great job. Thank you.
And for all the students here from Moyac Elementary School, Board of Education has some Moyac Elementary School roots. I was principal there for five years. Mr. Stefanik taught there, and Ms. Kraft-
Twenty-five years.
And I was there one year.
One year. So a lot of Moyac Elementary roots there. Okay, next item on the agenda, Cheerleaders and Community Outreach.
Hi, I actually thought it was going to be Hannah talking, not me, so I don't have anything prepared, but I have the privilege, and can I just say that I just stole that from you because that was so good? I'm like, wow, that girl was good right off the spot. And can I say one more thing to them? Also, my child is a first grader, almost at kindergarten, she's a first grader at Moyac, and the kids that are out there doing the car duty are awesome. Like, they are so polite, and they open the doors for them. It's super cute. So they do a really good job there. But I actually wanted Hannah to speak because she approached me about doing these bags for the women's violence shelter, and I thought it was a fabulous idea. She came up to me and asked me if we could do it. You know, I got all the cheerleaders together, and they pretty much came, and we gave them a list of things they could bring, and she's going to show an example of that as well when she's talking today. But I really want her to definitely talk because she's the one who kind of implemented this and put this together, and the reason why the school, with the cheerleaders and the other two groups that she's going to talk about, did such a great job presenting the, these to the women's shelter, because she's the one who brought this about. And without people like Hannah, you know, stuff like this doesn't get done.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Dozier, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Blessing Bags. So over the summer, my mom and I decided that we wanted to do a community outreach project for my junior year. After many nights of research and critical thinking, we decided to bring the community together to help benefit the Albemarle Hope House of Elizabeth City. They're a nonprofit organization that survives mainly off of anonymous investors and private donations. They also provide a safe place for victims of domestic violence or sexual assault to call their temporary home while they're trying to find somewhere else to stay. We knew that it was a location close to us that would be easy to bring awareness to. The items we gathered for donations were easy to obtain, and we had a lot of help from our community. When the women who stay here are trying to escape a dangerous situation, they do not think of all the necessities that they may need later on. The whole point of this community outreach project was to help the victims make up for time that they have already lost. The biggest source of all of our donations came from the Currituck County High School Cheer Team, the Beta Club, and the student government. Something that encouraged fellow students to donate items would have been the reward system that we used. For cheer, the stunt group that brought in the most items got spirit points towards a prize at the end of the year. And for Beta Club and student government, in order to stay in the clubs, you have to have at least 12 community service hours or three events. So something that I came up with was being rewarded with at least two hours or an event for a certain amount of items brought in. Originally, my mom and I had gone to the store and bought five bags. That was our original goal, but we ended up having 31 bags in all. After my tour of the Hope House, I realized how inspirational and eye-opening the whole experience was. Giving back to those in need not only makes you feel good about yourself, but others around you feel good as well. I am thankful that so many others in our community are just as fortunate as I am and are so willing to give back to those who need it. And so this is just an example of the Blessing Bag.
Like, when we had the tour, my mom and I got so wrapped up, we actually gave all the bags. So this one's just like, kind of phone stuff from my house. So we just have like some travel size items. We have some tampons and pads, toothbrushes, anything that they wouldn't think about to like normally get like in a hurry. And so each bag was filled at least halfway because there was so much stuff. We had to like overfill some of them, but they were all so grateful for all the bags, and it just really made you feel good to serve your community like that. So thank you, guys.
Can you say, there was 31 bags?
Yes, sir. Thirty-one bags that are exactly like this.
Is that how many women are in the shelter?
Well, no. Typically, there's up to, there's nine rooms, so about nine women can stay, but up to 30 if they have like family, like kids, or like siblings or anything like that.
Well, what a great blessing you have been to the women in need, and I applaud you for that.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Good job, Hannah.
Hannah, yes, you, well, you and your mother should be very proud of yourself for what you've done. Okay, next item, Teacher Assistance of the Year recognition.
of the Year, Teachers of the Year, and the Principal of the Year. I'm kind of lumping the three together in this presentation as that helps me walk through each person's name, and we will give a plaque, and the winner for the county will get a monetary award. But we should really be extremely proud of our teachers, our teacher assistants, and our principals that are working in each school. But every single year, we're lucky enough to have individuals in each school chosen to be Teachers of the Year, Teacher Assistants of the Year, and a Principal of the Year for our county. The greatest part about these awards is they're chosen by their peers or by their administrators. So they're people that they work with that believe that they do an extraordinary job in each school. In order to choose a county winner, though, it gets a little more difficult. Each individual has to do a small portfolio, and it consists of things that they have done throughout their career with their highlights. Community members, then, along with administrators and teachers and teacher assistants, are on a committee. They will interview each individual and read through their portfolio, and it's a very, very difficult job because we have to come from each, from teacher assistants with one person, with the teachers, one person, and the principals, one person. So now, we are going to give all our candidates a plaque, and we're going to congratulate them for their awards that they got from the school. And then we are going to announce each one who will be representing our county. So I'd like to start with the Teacher Assistance of the Year, and some individuals were not able to be here, so I'm sorry that we didn't have the entire list here. But we're going to announce everybody that got their awards for each school, and then we're going to ask all the individuals that are here to come up and receive their, their plaques and awards. And I'd like to start with Teacher Assistance of the Year. From our high school, we have Beth O'Brien, and she's unable to be here today. From Moyac Middle School, I'd like to congratulate Amy Gould. Gould, congratulations. I wanted to call, come on forward so that you can get your plaque. I turned you into gold. From Knott's Island Elementary School, we have Lexi DeFord. From Griggs Elementary School, we have Dawn Wimmer. And I'm going to ask everybody to remain standing, please. From Currituck County Middle School, we have Peggy Wood. From Central Elementary School, we have Jessica Montaigne. From Jarvisburg Elementary School, we have Ashley Pritchett. And from Moyac Elementary School, and our county winner for Teacher Assistant of the Year, we have Julia Saver. She will receive a plaque and a cash award. And you will remain here because I'm going to do a giant picture with everybody. Now I'd like to recognize our Teachers of the Year. You ready for Teachers of the Year? Okay. Moyac Middle School, we'd like to congratulate Ashley Potter. I believe she could not be here today. Knott's Island Elementary School, Kristin Yamakowski, and she's unable to attend this evening also. Coming to us from Charville Elementary School is Tammy Harsh. And from Griggs Elementary School, Jessica Preher. From JP Napp Early College, we have Susan Boone. From Currituck County Middle School, I believe he was unable to attend, and I believe he retired, it's Bob Stuhhart. From Moyac Elementary School, we have Bee Winstead. Okay. From Central Elementary School, Megan Materia. From Jarvisburg Elementary School, we have Sarah Perrell. And from Currituck County High School, and our county winner for Teacher of the Year, we have Susan Buzzard. She will get a plaque and a cash award. And we have a wonderful young woman who is representing Griggs Elementary School, who has, is chosen to represent Currituck County Schools as our Principal of the Year, and that is Angel Lasher. Let's give her a round of applause. She places students' needs as a priority in her school. Let's give everybody a round of applause, and then, okay, and, good, I'll get my camera.
For the board's information, for the board's information and the guests in the audience, one other announcement about Ms. Buzzard. She is in the middle of the finals as the Regional Teacher of the Year, and so they, they picked the final two out of 17 counties, and they went through a pretty extensive interview and school visit process on Friday, and so we're waiting to hear the results of that. So it's very possible that we could also have the Regional Teacher of the Year in our presence tonight as well. So good luck to Ms. Buzzard as they make that decision.
I'm going to step back. I have everybody. All right, let's try a nice, beautiful smile.
Congratulations, everyone.
I asked because I was one of the parents in on that interview, and, you know, November is all they say on the side.
Yeah, they didn't say whether she was first or second, so they could have the other school to still go to.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, public comment session. Did anybody sign up? Next item, Student Board Member Report. Kealan, Sidney, Colin, and Mallory.
Hello, Board. I'll be starting off with Moyac Elementary. MES is very proud of their Panther leaders who have exhibited incredible growth towards academic goals, as well as the three Ps of behavioral expectations of the first quarter of the school year. Students have been practicing a growth mindset in acquiring new learning skills from kindergarten through fifth grade. Extracurricularly, the weather couldn't stop our annual community fall festival from being a success. Attendees got to participate in trick-or-treating, games, inflatables, and even a petting zoo. We look forward to our annual holiday kindergarten play being held on December 18th at 9:00 a.m. and invite the community to come enjoy the show. Next is Jarvisburg Elementary. So JES hosted its Fall Title One Reading Night on October 25th. Students and parents had a blast dressing up and visiting classrooms to learn literacy tricks. After the fun and learning events, families had the opportunity to trick-or-treat and join us for dinner. It was a fun night and a record turnout for us. We recently completed our PBIS nine-week celebration with Minute to Win It games, and on Monday, November 19th, we will hold our luncheon and ice cream party for our Leaders of the Month. The second annual canned food drive is now underway at JES. We are trying to beat last year's record of fifteen hundred food items. Go Jags! On Saturday, December 1st, come on out between 3:00 and 5:00 p.m. to enjoy a performance by the big guy. That's right, Santa. Santa will be giving a performance beginning at 3:00 p.m., and kids can visit with Santa after the show. The cost of admission is a canned food item. Cookies and cocoa will be served. We hope to see you all there. Happy Thanksgiving from all of us here at JES. Have a great break. And then from Central Elementary. Central Elementary has had a busy couple of weeks from our costume parade and PBIS Reward Day on October 31st to our Veterans Day celebrations on November 9th, which included a student-led assembly, memorial museum, decorations, and lunch. We are currently raising money and collecting school supplies and gently-used books for Trenton Elementary in Jones County as they still struggle to recover from Hurricane Florence. This weekend, we will host our first-ever vendor fair from 9:00 to 2:00. Please come on out and do some Christmas shopping while supporting our PTO. Additionally, we will be having our first nine weeks awards assemblies on Tuesday, November 20th, as well as celebrating the Thanksgiving holiday together. That's all for me. I pass it on to Sidney.
Hi there. I'll be starting with Charbro Elementary School. We had our great awards assembly on the 7th of November. The end of the first nine weeks was October 26th. We await our Mustangs' wonderful next section of the academic achievement. Charbro is looking forward to Thanksgiving break, which starts on the 21st. I will now move on to Griggs Elementary. Griggs will be having their first nine weeks awards assembly on Friday, November 16th. We will have our second PBIS rewards event on Tuesday, November 2nd. Our kindergarten and first-grade students will be celebrating Thanksgiving with a feast on November 20th as well. We are also collecting school supplies and gently-used books for those affected by Hurricane Florence. Thanks to Sophie Jordan for organizing this. I will now move on to Knott's Island Elementary School. Knott's Island finished up the nine weeks with their whole school's Halloween STEM activities. As we move towards Thanksgiving break, November 19th through the 21st, we will be celebrating the first nine weeks accomplishments with our awards assembly on November 13th. Students will be showing off their lexicon and creativity at the annual vocabulary parade on November 20th at 2:00. Hope to see everyone there. And now I'll pass it on to Colin.
Hello, Board. Today I'll be starting with Currituck County Middle. We have had a lot going on at CCMS over the past few weeks. We celebrated Red Ribbon Week by having themed dress-up days each day and ended the week with a guest speaker from the Sheriff's Department who spoke with our student body about harmful effects of drug use, as well as bullying. To honor our veterans, Mrs. Kim Jackson once again put on a memorable Veterans Day assembly that was led by eighth-grade social studies students and Beta Club officers. LTC Grimes had a wonderful message for our students. This year's program was dedicated to the late Ed Bailey, who served in the U.S. Navy. In addition to organizing the Veterans Day assembly, Mrs. Jackson's eighth-grade social studies classes also wrote over 150 thank-you cards to veterans, not only in our local community, but also to friends and family of students and staff. We wrapped up a successful fall sports season, and will be recognizing those student athletes at our Fall Awards banquet on November 28th at 6:00 p.m. The students and staff at Currituck County Middle School want to wish the Board a very happy Thanksgiving. We're all thankful for your service to our educational community. Next, I will be moving on to Moyac Middle. Last week, we celebrated Red Ribbon Week, where students and faculty members participate in events to support drug awareness. In addition, students, faculty, and staff participated in Spirit Days, where the focus was drug prevention and living a drug-free lifestyle. AMS has an upcoming winter dance on December 7th, 2018. Admission is free. Come out and dance the night away. Fall Athletic Awards will be this Thursday at 6:30 p.m. We look forward to seeing everyone there. Next, I have JP Napp Early College. Congratulations to the JP Napp Early College High School for once again participating in First Vote NC simulation election on November 5th. Mrs. Crowther spearheaded this effort for Napp as a way to help students connect knowledge with real-world application and instill in young people a belief that their voice matters. As noted by the First Vote organization, Bernice Crowther is an outstanding precinct director. Her efforts in the 2016, 2017, and 2018 elections have allowed a significant number of students to experience what it is like to participate in their democracy. Special thanks to Mrs. Crowther. Bo Davenport took a group of PE and fitness students to the first flight of Venture Park on November 9th. Hats off to Coach D for making health and wellness relevant for students. COA Spring 2019 Registration is underway with four- to five-year planning review, planning slash review taking place through the guidance officer and seminar classes. First JP Napp Parent Teacher Organization meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 15th at 6:00 p.m. in the Media Center. All parents are invited. It's a busy time for students. SGO Turkey Blitz and Food Drive is underway, and both SAD and FBLA organizations will be attending state conferences this month. And best of luck to Napp students who are performing in the play Laurel on November 16th. After that, I pass it on to Mallory.
Okay, finally, we have Currituck County High School. We are incredibly proud of the over 150 Knights who achieved all A Honor Roll for the first nine weeks, as well as the additional 275 who earned placement on our AB Honor Roll. In all, some 430 students were recognized for their outstanding scholastic performance in the first quarter of the academic year. Kudos to the girls volleyball team, which, under the direction of the head coach Doug Towel, won the 2A NC HSS, or NC HSAA state championship at Reynolds Coliseum on the campus of NC State on November 3rd, with our own Cameron Johnson being selected tournament MVP. The standout student athletes helped the Knights bring home the fifth state title in school history, joining the 1986 1A basketball squad, the 1991 and 1993 1A volleyball champions, and last year's state 2A champion ladies golf team. Team members were recognized at halftime of the Currituck Edenton Homes football game last Thursday, and a formal championship ring presentation will occur during the winter athletics campaign. Both Matthew Weeks and Noah Justice, under guidance of the head choral director Tiffany Arbogast and the band director Lee Russell, have been selected to represent North Carolina in the Association for Music Education's All-National Honors Ensemble. Weeks will present the mixed choir division, while Noah will participate in the concert band division at Disney World in Florida at the end of the month. We are very proud of the Health and Physical Education teacher Susan Buzzard, who was recently named as a finalist for Northeastern North Carolina's Teacher of the Year. This past Friday, we were honored to have members of the selection committee here with us at Currituck County High. Many thanks to our Air Force ROTC unit, which, under the direction of Colonel Keith Grimes and Sergeant Anselita Graham, continued its annual tradition of helping serve meals to member of our military on Veterans Day at Captain George's Restaurant. On Election Day, social studies teacher Selena Jarvis served as precinct director for the First Vote North Carolina's election stimulation. This marks her second consecutive year helping. In the words of First Vote NC founder Hunter Buxton, "Connect knowledge with real-world application and instilling in young people a belief that their vote matters in our democracy." Currituck County High was recently selected to participate in the National Assessment of Educational Progress, the NAEP, testing in the spring of 2019. Often referred to as the nation's report card, NAEP remains the largest nationally representative and continuing assessment of what America's students know and can do in various subject areas. And that's it.[1280.01][1280.01][laughing]
Kealan, Sidney, Colin, and Mallory, thank you. Okay, next item, field trip request. You see before you four different field trip requests that Mr. Stefanik approved. Nobody has any questions on that? We'll go to the next item, the consent agenda.
Well, actually, Dr. Dominy, with one addition from this afternoon. I signed another one right before the meeting, and it goes along with the trend of our fall sports. This weekend, the football team is heading off to participate in the first round of the state football championships, and so we've had, we've had one fantastic fall in athletics and other areas, as referenced in the CCHS report about our musicians that made it to the national choir and the national band down at Disney World. So it's been a pretty exciting 2018 fall campaign.
Sounds like it. Okay, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Sure, a second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, information items. Our next work session will be December 6th at the Napp Professional Learning Center at 4:00. And our next Board of Education meeting will be December 6th, right here, at 6:30. Okay, Board Member and Superintendent comments. We'll start with the Superintendent, Mr. Stefanik.
Thank you, Dr. Dominy. Just an FYI for the Board Members and anybody in the audience that wants to book your seats early. At the next Board meeting, we're going to have a nice array of awards presentations and recognitions from sports folks to the music folks to, I've got awards from the state superintendent for our schools that met or exceeded growth, and we'll just have a nice celebratory Board meeting right before the Christmas holidays.
Okay, Mr. Crowder.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate all the teachers, assistants, teachers, and principals, Principal of the Year. And I'd like to also congratulate the volleyball team and the football team. Wish them all well on their journey and the band. I've been engaged with a couple interesting meetings recently, one of budget, which isn't the funnest thing, but we're trying to come up with some new ideas in hopes that we can expand the level of service and hopefully would do it within our budget. I also had the pleasure of meeting with Ms. Gorza and her teachers at the, let's see, their planning period time. So I wasn't able to disrupt the class while hearing their concerns. And I shared your concerns with the rest of the Board. And we're going to, we're going to work hard and get those concerns met. And I would like to also thank the Board for hearing those concerns and acting on them. We're going to, hopefully, as a Board, or the majority of the Board, be touring a lot of schools and meeting with teachers much like that, in hopes that we hear what their concerns are, and not just hear, you know, on a piece of paper. And we want to hear what you need, and hopefully, we can fulfill them all. I can't make any promises, but we are certainly going to come around and hear from the educators and try to improve on a good system, but, you know, we're going to think outside the box. Anyhow, with that, I'd like to, you know, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and God bless Currituck County.
Ms. Rose?
Well, I've had the opportunity recently to attend a couple of great Veterans Day programs put on by our students and under the direction of our staff members, and I'm very proud of our band and musical awards and all of our athletes who have made it into the playoffs and done really well. And I'm super proud of our volleyball team, who are the state champions. I had the pleasure of attending that game at NC State, and it was very, very exciting. I'd like for all parents, students, faculty members to know, as always, I'm only a phone call away. If you need me, you can call me. I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving.
Ms. Athrich?
Yes, I too would like to congratulate the Assistant Teachers of the Year and also the Teachers of the Year for Currituck County Schools. We're very proud of you. Congratulations to our Currituck County High School volleyball team for winning the state championship. I was able to tour a few of our schools. Jarvisburg Elementary, they're doing great things at Jarvisburg on the southern end of Currituck County. A couple events held at Central Elementary School, costume party and the sing-along that they had for Halloween, that's always a fun event, and I thank those that put that on and the kids, they just had the best time parading in in all of their different costumes and laughing and singing and enjoying every minute. Also, the Veterans Day Assembly that they held at Central Elementary School, that was a wonderful event honoring those that have served our country, and for that, I am very thankful. And thank you very much for letting us serve on the Board of Education and for Ms. Rose and Dr. Dominy and myself. We were re-elected for this term, and we're going to do everything we can to be good stewards of the finances. And we're in a tight budget, as everyone knows, and we're going to go through the budget and try to cut as much as we can without losing our wonderful teachers. We're going to do everything we can to try to balance the budget for the upcoming year. And I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving with their loved ones, family, friends, and be safe and just enjoy the family time together. Thank you.
Ms. Kraft?
Yes, I echo the congratulations for everyone that we celebrated here tonight. I went to all of our schools this month. Moyac Middle School had sixth and seventh grade band showcase, which I attended. I went to the Veterans Day programs at Currituck County Middle and at Charbro Elementary School. Stepped into Moyac Elementary School and ended up in Letterland event, so they were all dressed up, and that was fun. I went to Currituck County High School's AP class, chemistry classes, haunted Halloween lab, and wow.[1722.83][1722.83][laughing] It was amazing. The kids were having a great time. They invited kids from, I think it was Jarvisburg and Griggs, I believe, and they, the kids were having a great time, and I had a great time, too. So the rest of the schools, I just visited and enjoyed having some time to just walk around and see the teachers. I also wish you a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving, and that's all.
I'd like to echo the sentiments, my fellow Board Members, on the congratulations to everyone since the last meeting. I attended a unique event in Kim Crank's class, where she did an activity on World War I and II. And they use these little, they're controlled by Bluetooth balls, and they were part of the, do you know what the name of them are?
It's a Spiro.
Spiro.
Anyway, it was just a real neat activity. For those of you that have never attended one of Buddy White's plays, Buddy has a play coming up this Friday, Saturday.
Didn't he write this one? For some reason, I thought, yeah, he wrote this one. That's really exciting.
Yeah. And then, lastly, we met with the state superintendent, Mark Johnson, and Ms. Doughty, Mr. Stefanik, Mr. Monroe, and myself met with him, it was in November 1st, and talked to him about seeing what we could get done so we could offer more vocational programs, especially in the trades, like electrical, HVAC, you know, plumbing. So, and he completely understood. He said he supports everything that we're trying to do, but, you know, the mechanism for getting through the state legislature moves slowly. So we have to wait for them to make some decisions. And with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And hopefully, everyone has a great Thanksgiving.